Um, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cap Groza.
Here.
Commissioner Livermore.
Here.
Commissioner Nelson.
Here.
Commissioner Rondo.
Here.
Commissioner Teber.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brief public comments. We have any brief public comment? Yes.
Hi, Joan Butter, Summer O'Notte Township. Um, I just, um, I haven't looked at the minutes, so I started looking at the minutes from the Commission from January fourth on, um, and, um, upon my view and listening to the video, the Commissioners meeting on one fifteen twenty-four, I offered the following comments. The statements referencing the conver- conversation had with Carl Bonak saying that Frito Lay will not purchase produce grown on their solar panels cannot be substantiated. I looked on the internet and contacted by phone the consumer relations of Frito Lay. On search of their database, they found nothing that, nothing that referenced such a practice by Frito Lay. Frito Lay has taken my contact information and said they would get back to me to, to me about the statement. In addition, the, the statement made about the sale of twenty thousand EVs by Hertz, getting rid of every one of them, quote unquote, according to a CNBC YouTube interview dated one twenty-two twenty-four with Hertz CEO Stephen Scher. The company is cutting its EV fleet by one-third over two years. Mr. Scher stated the man for EVs is real and sustaining. However, to maintain a fleet of this size at this point in time, it is not appropriate for Hertz's financial performance and company integrity. Factors that feed into the decision include depreciation, price decline in EVs and damage cost. I have links. Also, according to an outline, and, and according to an online Motor Trend article by Alex Kirsten dated eleven, January eleven twenty-four, EVs are only eleven percent of Hertz's total fleet. So, the twenty thousand EVs, the company is going to sell off by the end of twenty twenty-five, represent four point four percent of the entire fleet. This does not seem like a permanent retreat from the EV business for Hertz, but rather a right reallocation of a small portion of its overall assets in an attempt to hold costs down, end quote. Again, I have a link for that. Last, about the comment made about Toronto converting twenty electric buses to diesel, I offer the following. On internet search, there was no mention of EV bus conversion to diesel in Toronto. Several articles did reference the purchase of over three hundred EV hybrid buses and updating charging infrastructure through twenty twenty-five through the Toronto Transit Commission, TTC. Target of op- they have a target of operating an emission-free fleet by twenty forty. I contacted the TTC by phone and a representative confirmed with me that as of twenty twenty, Toronto had sixty EV hybrid buses. Again, I have some other links. In this day and age of misinformation, I would encourage you as Commissioners of Eldrick County to be assured that the statements you make in public and on record be from reliable and confirmed sources. Um, also to go along with that, as far as the leaching of solar panels into the, the ground, um, that is not, that all the literature I've read, the EPA, the Michigan Extension, there is no reference to that. So, I would encourage you just, you know, read for yourself, don't necessarily pass on what you're hearing, because you don't always hear what you're, should hear, the truth. So, thank you.
All right. I just want to say, public comment, or when we do board comment, it's the same as public comment, it's just a comment, so, okay. Anybody else? When three times, yeah, agenda. Um, I do want to say we have some added material there to add to M on our financial matters. Which would be the last of the amended measures for twenty twenty-three. Final twenty twenty-three. Anybody got any? Thing else? On the agenda? Add eighteen M. Yep. Any motion on that? All consensus, uh, confused. Consensus on it all?
Yes.
Yes. Minutes. I did not find any. It all looked good. Wait for it. Consensus. Yep. Yep. And number four, Jenny.
Nick with LMAS District Report. Annual reports are perfect. Does everybody have a copy of the report? I brought some extra just in case. Want one?
I need one too.
It's also online, or on our.
Is it on our, in our agenda? Then I got one.
Very good one.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. You guys want copies?
Can I show next? Sure. Thank you.
Joel?
Well, this, look, this one together, right?
All right. Appreciate the opportunity to come before the Commission and present annual report. Uh, as always, want to keep it super informal. If you have any questions at any time, please feel free to pause me and ask quickly. So, this report is for the period of October first twenty-two through, uh, September thirtieth twenty-three. First page of the report is a table of contents, lists the various items contained within the report. And the next page of the report is a letter to the community. This is where I talk about some of the things that happened at the department through the fiscal year. Uh, twenty twenty-three was a positive year for LMAS. At the start of the year, we focused a lot on staff well-being. Uh, previous few years were pretty hard on all of our staff, so we're really trying to do what we could to support them and, uh, boost them up as it was hard on all of our communities as well. We provided some leadership training to our administrative team, and we added a deputy health officer and a deputy medical director. Became evident during the pandemic that we didn't have much bench strength, and we needed those additional positions to help support department operations. We improved security by adding a key pop system in all of our offices across the four counties, and we focused on getting the word out about our public health programs. I think even pre-pandemic, a lot of times folks didn't know all the work that we do, so we were able to get some funding from the state, and we partnered with all the UP Health Departments, and you may have heard some ads on the radio, seen them on TV, some of the advertisements promoting work that we do at the Health Department. Uh, we again expanded our programming without raising any of the costs of accounting, including adding additional laboratory services, home visitation, and some school-based help. And then lastly, we thank our many community partners, including the Commission, uh, our Board of Health, uh, schools, uh, all of our community partners. Our work is impossible as UPers without the support of other community resources. And then the staff at LMAS, they do great work. I cut the, yeah, opportunity to talk about it, but they're the one there getting things done. Next page of the report is a listing of our Board of Health members and our administrative team members in fiscal year twenty-three. After that is the county health profile. That shows leading causes of death within the district and compares them to the state of Michigan and also the United States. A couple of caveats, this data is from calendar year twenty-three, so it's a little bit behind. It takes the time, the state, a little bit of time to get this data out. Also, with our small numbers within the district, uh, we're prone to have our numbers move around quite a bit compared to the state of Michigan and the United States that remain stable. Our populations also tend to be a little bit older, so if you look at the far-right two columns, uh, we try to adjust for that by age-adjusted rates of death. Um, some categories of numbers are simply too small to be reliable, so you won't find numbers for those categories. Uh, when you look at the rank, uh, within the district for heart disease and cancer, uh, those are definitely the most do, um, leading causes of death. They're one and two within the district, one and two, uh, within Michigan, so the US. Uh, then below that, our numbers move around a little bit. They do every year. We watch them, there's nothing really concerning in any of the other numbers that are listed. The next page of the report is an overview of our financials. In fiscal year twenty-three, we had another perfect financial audit. It was our thirteenth consecutive year in the black at the department. Uh, we had total revenues of six million nine hundred thousand three hundred and forty, total expenses of six million eight hundred and twenty-six thousand and ninety dollars. So, our revenues exceeded expenses by seventy-four thousand two hundred and fifty. A significant amount of our revenue comes from federal and state sources, about eighty-five percent. Uh, five percent, however, do come from our local appropriations from the four counties. On the expense side, like a lot of public entity, about seventy percent is from salaries and fringes. The next largest category is other, that's kind of where a lot of things get lumped. A big chunk of that is contractual expenses partnering with other UP Health Departments. We have a UP-wide home visiting program. Each of the departments provide services in there, so that's included along with some contract employees, our legal, uh, our opioid grant expenses that are running off last year, and some of our, uh, laboratory, uh, maintenance expenses as well. Next page of the report is an overview of the programming that we have at the department. I'm not going to spend any time on that, so we're going to go through each of the departments individually. The next page is community health and health promotion. Uh, in our community health and health promotion division, we provide prevention services. We do tobacco retailer checks. It included our Eastern Upper Peninsula Opioid Response Consortium. Uh, we have harm reduction, uh, and also health promotion. So, we provide, provide Botman's Life Skills Training in ten of the middle schools across the four counties, and we serve six hundred and thirty-nine middle school students. Um, of the four schools we were not in, they did receive Botman's Life Skills Training, but they were provided by other entities, either Communities That Care or the local Sheriff's Department provided that training in those schools. Uh, we did a pilot elementary program in fiscal year twenty-three. We're finding that unfortunately, uh, by the time kids were getting to middle school, they were already doing things. We need to be out ahead of that with our education, so we started providing education down in the third and fifth grade to educate kids on the danger, especially vaping, to try to educate them on that, so they don't make the decision to use. Uh, we provided Narcan training to two hundred and thirty-six individuals, and we served fifty-one peer recovery clients with four hundred and sixty appointments. Next page of the report is our school-based health. In fiscal year twenty-three, we transitioned our St. Ignace E3 site to a school wellness program site. So, prior to that, it only had a master declared social worker. We were able to write and receive some additional funding to add a nurse to that site, to make it a school wellness program. We're in the process of trying to recruit and hire that position. At our Adolescent Health Center at Kwamanon, we have a nurse practitioner three days a week. We have a master declared social worker five days a week. Um, at the center, we serve two hundred and ten unduplicated clients. We provided fifty-one telehealth services. We did ninety physical exams and provided three hundred and ninety-six mental health appointments, and we continued our healthy snack program there as well. Uh, we have E3 programs, they're called, in Manistee, Munising, Ingadine, and previously St. Ignace, but now we're working to transition that to Cedarville. In, at those sites, we have a master declared social worker in the school at no cost to the school, and they're able to provide services to the kiddos. Uh, in our E3 programs, we served a hundred and eighty-nine unduplicated clients and provided two thousand three hundred and eighty-four total visits in the fiscal year. The next page of the report is our emergency preparedness department. Um, like each of the counties, we have our own emergency preparedness department. Uh, we have our emergency preparedness coordinator with our, with us here, uh, Bobby Ayah. She works out of our Eldrick County office. Our emergency preparedness coordinator works with the county emergency preparedness coordinators, but we're focused on public health emergencies, like responding to the, uh, pandemic as we did starting in twenty twenty. So, we're looking at pandemic influenza plans, mass dispensing plans, anything we can do to respond to those types of events and keep our citizens safe. Um, in fiscal year twenty-three, we got back to attending a lot of the trainings and a lot of the exercises like we had in previous years where, prior to that, we've been focused on pandemic response. So, you can see a listing of the trainings and exercises that we've participated in in the fiscal year. Of note, was a very large-scale exercise over in Mackinac, uh, that involved, um, evacuating the island that had been in the lurch about eight years, so that took place this year. Next page of the report, what was that?
Go smoothly.
Well, you know, I think the reason we do those is you always find things that, no matter how much you plan, things happen, and have to be able to change up on the fly. So, I think it was a learning experience, and I think they were able to make some changes that'll help out in the future. Everything's always a little trickier over on that. Okay, so, the next page is environmental health. In environmental health, that's where we do our septic permitting, our well permitting. Uh, we have a non-community water supply program, so we're out making sure the water's safe at facilities that serve water to the public but are not on municipal water. Uh, we have a soil erosion program. We, uh, do food service inspections, pool inspections, campground inspections, and we also respond to complaints across any of those environmental health programs. So, in fiscal year twenty-three, we successfully recruited, hired, and trained some new staff members. We implemented a new software in environmental health. Our software was about twenty years old, so we were able to upgrade that. Uh, we brought our body art program back in-house when the state mandated that we have a body art program. At the time, we didn't have any facilities in the four counties, so we were able to work with Delta Menominee to kind of cover them as they came up, but we ended up with enough within the district that they said it was time for us to take both back. So, we brought that program back in-house last year. Uh, we met with county and township officials to discuss the Land Division Act, uh, make sure everybody was on the same page with mechanics of that and how that works and the requirements that we need to follow from the state. Uh, we also, uh, conducted two hundred and sixty-one fixed food service inspections of restaurants, schools, uh, and other places that are at fixed facilities, and a hundred and fifty temporary food events. So, if a vendor sets up that, uh, the Fourth of July or some other local, um, event, we inspect that and make sure that the food there is safe. We also issued two hundred and twenty-eight septic permits, a hundred and eighty-two well permits, and both of those numbers were very similar to what we had done the prior year. And then we investigated thirty, uh, complaints across our environmental health programs. The next page of the reports is our home visitation program. In home visitation, we actually have two separate pro- programs. One of them is the maternal infant health program that's available to Medicaid moms, um, so pregnant women and young kiddos. And that, we send a nurse and a social worker into the home. We provide those services in our four counties and also Delta and Menominee. And then also, under the home visitation umbrella, we have Healthy Families UP. We are the fiduciary agency. We contract with all the health departments across the UP to provide that program that's available to pregnant moms and kiddos up to age five, um, regardless of insurance or income status. So, in fiscal year twenty-three, we did receive, uh, HERSA Neonatal Abstinence Syndrome Grant. It's one million dollars over three years, where we're able to bring some staff on board and help, uh, families that are struggling with substance use issues to hopefully, um, improve that situation and keep kiddos healthy and on the right track. Uh, in Healthy Families UP, we served a hundred and nine families and completed eighteen hundred and thirteen home visits. On the MIHP side, uh, we continue to rebuild our caseload. We've been making a good amount of progress there, and it continues to improve. In fiscal year twenty-three, we had sixty referrals, uh, forty-three new intakes, and completed three hundred and eighty-one, uh, home visits in the maternal infant health program. Next page of the report is our personal family health division. In personal family health, we have the Women, Infants, and Children Program, otherwise known as WIC. We provide immunizations. We have a family planning program. We provide breast and cervical cancer, uh, screenings. We have communicable disease and STD, uh, Investigation and Response Program. And then we provide hearing and vision screenings along with kindergarten oral health. So, in fiscal year twenty-three, we success- successfully launched our new kindergarten oral health program and screened sixty-five kids across the district. It was a pilot program last year. We were able to recruit and hire, uh, registered dental hygienists. We got all of our dent procedures in place, and we're able to get, uh, the agreement in place with the overseeing dentist, so that number will go up quite a bit next fiscal year. Uh, we also served twelve hundred and seventy-six WIC clients. The report actually incorrectly lists nine fifty. We pulled that from the wrong area, so there is a correction on that. It was actually twelve hundred and seventy-six. Of those WIC participants, uh, WIC participants spent four hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars in those benefits and local businesses across the district. So, not only does it help the moms and the kiddos, it also provides economic benefit to our local businesses as well. We provided eleven hundred and thirty-five immunizations. We served a hundred and eighty-two family planning clients. We provided eleven hundred and twenty-seven hearing screenings and nineteen hundred and sixty-three vision screenings to preschoolers and school-aged children across the district. Those numbers are up a little bit from what they would be in a typical year, and that simply is a result of us losing one of our, um, hearing and vision tests, and then the state only offers training at one time per year. So, in this fiscal year, we caught a couple of those kiddos twice. So, usually that would settle out maybe around a thousand or a little bit less. It's kind of what would be typical for those two. Um, and then you can see the chart at the bottom that lists the various communicable diseases that were reported to us in the fiscal year that we, uh, investigated and followed up on. The next page of the report is our clinical laboratory, and in our clinical laboratory, we are able to analyze a whole host of, uh, samples. We can, uh, test for COVID-nineteen, influenza, RSD, uh, and then, uh, various sexually transmitted diseases, as long as hepatitis C. In fiscal year twenty-three, we did add hepatitis C to our testing. Uh, we also began utilizing our mobile laboratory unit across the district, but we're not simply using that for laboratory, we're using it for other things as well. We had it set up at different events to allow, uh, moms the opportunity to use it to go in to breastfeed their kiddos. Uh, we also took it out and provided immunizations, and we have plans in the future for, uh, mobile WIC clinics, so we can take our services out to some of the remote areas where it's a little bit harder for our clients to make it into our offices. So, you'll see that out about more this year. Uh, we analyzed seventy-five gonorrhea samples, seventy-five plamidia samples, and then six hepatitis C samples as we just onboarded that, uh, test this year. Next page of the report is our drinking water laboratory. Uh, in our drinking water laboratory, we can test for E. coli, uh, coliform bacteria in drinking water or in surface water samples such as bathing beaches or swimming pools. Uh, we had, we ran our most tests that we ever have in fiscal year twenty-three out of the water lab. Uh, we completed two thousand seven hundred and five total tests. Sixteen hundred and thirty-three were bacteria, four hundred and twenty nitrate, and six hundred and fifty-two surface water. We had just brought this lab online at the start of fiscal year twenty. Um, there was a significant need for this. Um, all of our, uh, non-community water supply operators are required to collect water samples, and those water samples have to be tested within a certain period of time. They have to be at a certain temperature, and they're just really struggling with the mail to get them to the lab within that amount of time and at the proper temperature. So, we were able to se- secure some funding from the state at no cost, again, to our counties. We can do these samples in-house. We also have a courier that runs through the counties each day. They stop by each of our offices, they pick up the samples, they take them back to the lab and lose. That's a huge cost savings for a lot of our businesses, and makes a lot of that sampling a lot easier.
Um, quick question, do you, how many fail tests of these, like, uh, for bacteria?
You know, I don't have that number. I can get that too, Dean, I can send that back.
For curiosity, you know. You have to, I'm up in the hall, what's it?
Oh, it's water.
Yeah, oh, it's a water.
Yeah, you know, I, uh, I can get that sample or that number, and I can get it back to you guys. I think overall, generally, the samples are coming back pretty good. Usually, when we're seeing a positive, oftentimes, we see maybe a well cap came loose, you're getting some bugs or insects underneath that well cap, different types of things, but there is a percentage that will tend to come back positive. Uh, and then the last pages of the report are a listing of our staff members that we had at the department at some point throughout fiscal year. They're not all there now, but, um, they were at some point, so. That's what I have for you guys, and I'm happy to take any questions that anybody might have.
I could wait another two seconds. Wonder why it's, why they call it the most?
I think I was over three minutes, but.
Question? I'm good. Kelly?
I thought I had one, but it was like five pages back.
Yeah. When you left, you left the last.
I love when I left the last thing.
And if you think of it later, Kelly, you can always give me a call, I'm happy to.
Oh, I guess, I was going to ask, um, I know that the schools just had, um, my kids came home with toothbrushes and stuff. Was that your guys' program that did the school this recently? Or is there more than one that does it?
I would have to talk to Bailey to see what his schedule looks like.
Okay.
And let me know.
Yeah, and schools are using some other entities still.
Okay.
Not everybody, like, smiles on wheels that some schools will contract with, so there are other agencies.
I didn't know if you guys were, because you just implemented it, so I didn't know if it meant in our school yet or not.
Yeah, and it's kind of a learning process with the schools too, you know, making them aware that we have our program up and running, and some of them are used to using other services as well, so. And that was Cassie, by the way. Cassie Teber is our personal family health director, and she works out of our Eldrick County office as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions? Got it here?
Yes, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Audience, if there's questions?
Oh, I didn't take the time to add them up. I'm not, I'm not sure. I would guess that we did thousands and thousands of different things last year.
Sounded like a lot, didn't it?
That was a good question, though. Thank you.
All right.
You guys are, oh, okay. All right. If you get nitrates in your well, how do you get them out?
That's a tough one, Mick. Um, you end up with nitrates in your well, oftentimes you're end up, you end up putting in a deeper well. So, usually if you're seeing some type of nitrate contamination, it means things from the surface are making their way into that water supply, and sometimes it's an unprotected water supply. So, that's typically what ends up happening in our area.
And you get a, fill it full, uh, Ben and I. Pleasure. Thanks for that.
Good, thank you, Nick.
All right, yeah, you guys are good. I'm going to get on the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you guys very much. I always appreciate the opportunity to come over.
Yeah, it's bad. One of my questions were answered during that.
So, we're going to discuss the course of real repair. Um, Brian was able to get some, uh, numbers of folks on the roof. We've been having leaks for a few years. Two different, one was on the building committee.
Kelly and I?
Yeah, we had. You want to speak over there?
They brought us, they had, uh, yeah, two people come submit bids to him. He was, there's an obvious monetary difference in, to the tune of about eighty-five thousand dollars between the two of them. Uh, he said the folks from Great Lakes were, he said they were here for about three hours of, on, actually on the roof. of, actually on the roof, inspecting every little thing that they could find, you know, and they're the lower one too. There are also some outside conversation I'd had. We know they, this is the coating that they put on Mather. This is all this coating they just finished putting on the hospital. And I talked to Mr. John Madigan, happened to remember him last Friday after our meetings, and he said, these people know what they're doing. He said, yeah, we, nothing but extremely satisfied and happy with the job they've done, warmed up the hospital, so. And it was a much bigger roof.
Yeah. Our recommendation was, go with the Duralast from.
Well, they both got twenty-year warranty, but this right here, they're gonna get rid of the stone off the roof, which is left weight.
And it's white. Apparently they do not manufacture a black one. They only, they only do the white to reflect the sun.
So keep our heating or cooling costs.
So are you able to walk on this?
Yes.
Like and shovel it off if you have to?
You wanna be careful, any kind of rubberized product, you wanna be careful with the shovel on it, but.
Well, if you have to.
If Brian's gotta get up there and clear a drain or something, yes, if we have.
Still guaranteed.
Yeah, and what happens with this is it's not, this Great Lakes Ripping, they're not the ones guaranteeing that. They come, if they get the job, they come do the job. Duralast, the company sends an inspector. When they call and say their job's finished, they send, the manufacturer sends their own inspector. If it's not up to snuff, fix it. They're the ones, the manufacturer will hand us a twenty, will hand us the warranty once they approve the job. So that's kind of pretty interesting that it's not the installer that's handing it, saying, oh yeah, it's all done right. The manufacturer actually sends their own person to come inspect.
And they've been wrong for a while, Duralast. Okay, number nine, discuss jail cell lock upgrades. Brian must hear for that one, well, you guys were, you guys talked, went back to.
Well, I mean, you, they only have, I think there was only one person, there were two.
There were, yeah.
Yeah, because there's only so many people who can do these locks.
They're both based out of California.
Yeah, the price wasn't too much different between the two, was it? I remember.
I said the first one was a little less expensive.
But I did, didn't he say though that he was looking at getting a third? They didn't come through with a third, okay, because I don't remember seeing.
No, yeah, he said he was hoping to have it like five.
But I don't remember seeing the other two.
One of them was the original company that makes these locks, so which one's that?
But actually the manufacturer, the replacement locks, it's Adams something. It's in here where they described exactly in detail the Folger Adams. One-two-two E-dash-one-dash-zero-one electric locks. That's the same on both of them.
Yes, so then Folgers are just what they recommended.
Yeah, bids were pretty identical with the exception of one being nine thousand dollars less.
And that's the one that they recommended, that Brian recommended to use anyway.
I bought his expertise on the, I think there was, the one that I saw that I thought was kind of, then they meet it for their welders, but there was just very specific how much access they had to have to two-pointing for their welders. I'm gonna trust Brian, then that's, we have that for him, so.
Yes, no, the lock systems that are there are fifty years old and they just cannot find the silnoids or the products from anymore.
They just don't make them anymore.
No, they don't, they're forced to buy used parts.
I think he pretty much exhausted that effort too, these parts out there.
And once these are fixed, the community and everybody inside will be safer too. They'll be able to lock down, get them out if there's anything seen.
Consensus?
Where's, where's this money coming from?
I am going to submit a grant for it. And that's not a for sure grant, but we're gonna make a good attempt.
And that's gonna be roughly about forty grand of it, was it?
I'm thinking half or up to fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah, you're looking at a hundred and eleven, two sixty-seven.
Otherwise, if you don't get, where does it come from? General fund?
Yeah, we got the grant.
Yeah, I mean, that's tough, you know, might have to look at at some point our loose agreement again. That's gonna be reopened pretty soon, is it? Jail, loose of the.
Back up to a normal jail, Bruce. Yeah, that's, that's entirely up to you guys, we talked about it in budget. I could open that discussion up anytime.
See what they're thinking, I mean, we helped them all quite a bit to drop it down when they were in.
Yeah, absolutely. They got a new sheriff over there now. He was, he had a sheriff, so he's pretty good at dealing with.
Do them all, maybe.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any questions?
Nope.
Consensus? Ten, airport liability insurance renewal to come out of the airport fund, correct?
We got that.
Yeah, once a year, two thousand.
Pretty much the six hundred and eighteen dollars. Every year, so it goes up just a little bit, but.
Questions on that?
How much does that leave the airport with?
Seventy? Yeah, seventy-one, I thought we were down to snow.
They do a little, they almost have that, they've been working on that up there, like that.
Yeah, so we had some, we had some materials costs for insulation, drywall. All the, all the tummy groove wood on the ceiling was all donated, so that was all free of charge.
That grant?
All the labor's been.
But the grant that we've been, um, said we have hasn't been.
No, we have not received the check yet for that, so when that comes in, we'll be able to replace more than what we've expended.
That was fifty?
Yeah, a little over, actually.
That wasn't a state or federal grant, that was a.
Through the RAF.
Okay, but it's not the fifty thousand she's talking about.
No, no, that was a whole different thing.
Yeah, yeah, that was for cell locks. This isn't, this is for airport liability insurance. Consensus?
Yes.
And we have skips out of repair for the two thousand eighteen Tahoe. I believe that was a transmission that was a while ago, that was like pretty much ago or something. For roughly six thousand, five thousand nine hundred fifty-five thirty-five. Any questions on that? We can have many miles on it, it's worth putting in the money and it's a new team. We're running, it's running good.
And that's coming from where? Funding?
Sure.
You?
Twelve, discuss putting a two thousand thirteen Ranger five hundred or vehicle on the bits. And we're gonna, that's one of our track vehicles that, um, especially twenty-one is using. By the way, it just does not do the, what we need it for. And instead of, so I can sit there and rock, we're gonna put the tires back on it and put it out on bid. There's the phone that's probably get more on bid if we bid out the side-by-side itself with tires and the track separately. And we're gonna look at, they have, I do a lot with Wisconsin auction and they do a lot with U P, our dad's always putting, that's what they use and stuff. So I think we put stuff on auction outside of here, I mean, more of a, than just our website. That place gets thousands of hits every day. Right, sold for a little more money.
Right, to get more money for it, that's a little more money back in the budget.
Right, that's what we're seeing.
Have to get a new one?
No, we already did that.
We're not, yeah, we're not. Yeah, we're not using side-by-side anymore, they don't work.
Yeah, I'd rather see us, you know, we're not using it, there's no sense hanging on to it.
There's gonna be more coming, there's no clean house down there. We don't need a lot of this stuff, might as well get rid of that. Any questions? Consensus? With thirteen, discuss authorizing inter-county communication by Q pad to Elder County Board on the material management plan.
And when I heard that, I said it makes more sense, that's what their job is to do all the work for us on this, so.
I guess in the first place.
So we'll just make sure they know to.
They'll send, they'll send the letter to the neighboring counties that are also part of the program because the state requires that you notify all the neighboring counties.
I mean, they did give us the, our neighboring counties, so we could just.
So, but then they've got all the paperwork approved to the state.
Do you mind making a motion, voting on it, and we'll reaffirm it next week? Because they want it in the form of a minutes, a motion approved minutes, so.
I'm wondering, are they going to take care of where they ship this stuff to? Or they just collect it and sets in the file?
This is just notifying the other counties there.
Just notifying, start getting involved in it.
No, this is notifying each county that we're actually gonna be a.
Six counties.
County, right, that we're gonna work together.
We agreed to try and work together to meet mandates.
Yes, because we're not gonna be able to do it alone. And who knows what's gonna happen, we might not have to do it at all. But at this point, we gotta actually think forward and be ready for it if they do. So you wanna make this into a vote here? Authorize Q pad for inter-county communication?
I'd make the motion to authorize it.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
Vote? No, we'll call, I guess. I know. Mr. Gavirós? Yes, Mr. Livermore? Mr. Nelson? Yes, Mr. I know? Yes. Mr. Teager? Yes. Before we discuss board policy reviews. That's gonna be a big one.
Yeah, I'm even throwing your timetable earlier. Or at least everybody should release.
Yeah, so you should have got a word file, word doc.
You went over that whole thing.
Yep, yep, you and I and Joel and Pam went over it and made some more recommendations and. There was what, three or four spots where we're, we basically said, you know, we just take that to all five to decide rather than, or at least let everybody look at it. They offered their input again before we sit back down with it again next month and. Instead of making a bunch of recommendations that the rest of you don't like. And have to go back over and over and over and over.
One at a time or?
Or if everybody just wants to study it up.
Yeah.
If you've got any additions or changes you wanna have made, get them to Joel before our next committee meeting.
I gotta go a third of the way through that.
Yeah.
You know, and that's.
Another week I'll be able to make it through.
And we talked about that.
Give you a week.
Yeah, if everyone wants to send any changes, recommendations to Joel, then he can combine them into one document for us for, we'll pick it up again in April.
Okay, we will not put that on a consensus and we'll just put that.
Yeah, this was just a.
Discussion of it, yeah. Well, good, any questions?
Because it was, that's what made us run over, half an hour on our meeting.
And number fifteen, discuss elder county council, what was that one? That you, where? Oh, yep. I did contact a couple of the lawyers of both our. I'll let you keep this. Any of our, our current and future law stuff? Civil, civil, civil council? Any civil suits. So in the future, we do have some options if we do have any civil suits. Um, I think at this point, after speaking with them today, I think we should, uh, just leave it as is for a bit. Should what, Dean? We'll leave it as is for until the twentieth. We'll call them back on the twenty-first and see where we're at. We're supposed to have an answer on the twenty-first.
Four.
From last one to his court.
Oh, I thought that was the twenty-seventh.
We have court on the twenty-seventh, we're supposed to have an answer the twenty, twentieth.
We did fourteen.
Fourteen days to see what we're gonna do on the twenty-seventh. So I'm gonna talk to him on the twenty-first, I said I'll, we'll call him on the twenty-first and I expect some kind of what's happening.
You talked to Zappa?
Yes, so at that point, we'll probably have a meeting to make a decision. So when he does go back to court on the twenty-seventh, he has direction from us and not say, well, I gotta go come back here and go another.
No.
So I decided, yeah.
And this decision will be made on the.
And we'll make sure that he's, he has the current time, so we don't have to rush like we did that day. And we definitely had to rush at the end there, though.
Yeah, so this way, I'd rather do it on the twenty-first. Know what's going on so we can schedule a meeting and decide what we wanna do it for. And we'll have different avenues at that point.
Say anything, do it.
I think we should get together right away and make something so he has time to get ready for the twenty-seventh, on whatever we decide.
And then we're not.
So I was wondering.
Yeah, we were, we were hustling at the end because we wanted our attorney to be late for court and get in trouble. So Joel takes your call.
I was worried.
Joel wasn't here, Dean wasn't here.
South of the, south of the U P border.
Yes, that was. That's, are there any other questions on that? Now savings and revenue sources.
Sweet, what date did you get that for that, the twenty-first?
Two, fourteen days would be the twentieth, so I told him I would get ahold of him on the twenty-first to see what happened, if he heard anything back. And if that's, then we'll know what our next action's gonna be, but we'll make a meeting after the twenty-first.
But before the twenty-seventh?
But before the twenty-seventh, so I like to give him a few days before the twenty-seventh. So whatever our decision is to go forward, he has time, he gonna get there, I haven't had time to do anything, so we wanna bump it another. Don't put it over.
Set that next week maybe, just so we got a little more lead time now, well, instead of meeting, cancel it that way, that way we're.
Twenty-second or twenty-fifth?
That way Dean ain't marinating.
He is gonna be here on the twenty-seventh via Zoom.
Zoom only, yes.
Yeah, and that's the other thing, we need to get him so he can come in as a person or as Zoom.
Why don't we do it tentatively the twenty-second and I can ask him if he can zoom on that day and try to get a meeting where he can be here too, or. And we can do that here, zoom on this?
That's a Friday.
At least touch base, see what times work for him or.
What works best with you. Because we go, we go to fall on Monday too.
It's clear.
So I guess I'll just get with him the day today. Monday. I'll get with him tomorrow and see what we're.
What his schedule's like.
His schedule, and see if I can do, it'll be the Friday, the twenty-second or the twenty-fourth Monday. Twenty-fifth Monday. The way to your. Yeah, and that works for anybody else.
Yeah, we can decide for sure on either, you can decide.
I think that's the best, at least we can get with him beforehand and give him a chance. Back sixteen, top saving and revenue ideas. Anybody idea how you save money or make money?
Get a blue scotty.
I bring that one up already. Spend less.
Spend less.
That's your position. Bring in more spend less, there we go.
Sell the ranger.
Yeah, that's, I think there's gonna be some more stuff out there that we do not use, I don't think, there's small trailers that.
Yeah, they've been there a long time.
What we're talking about, we're gonna go through them on these days and see what we actually do and need and solidate, instead of sitting there rusting. Having to pay someday the whole mall, maybe get a lot of it.
Yeah, true.
You can hire the kid in the public to do a lemonade stand.
The pairs are still going high, uh.
What do we need money for?
No, cause then you gotta do all the insurance, if you just let it go.
Your own money.
Donate it to you.
Any unfinished business? Financial matters, A through M. Is there any questions, anybody go through that? I know it's a lot, it's a lot of the same thing, it's. How would you explain it?
Well, the first one is, first couple there is to amend our twenty twenty four.
So.
And.
B to twenty. Yeah, D C is moving money back to three.
From twenty four.
Twenty four.
Mm-hmm. That's all the money that we bring in from last year from.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
B is to even out last year's general funds, so they're all.
Think so?
They're negative or they're. E through. H is. Amending last year's budgets. Uh, and then plugging the holes with, um. Revenue that we're backing in. And I through. L is moving money between departments in general fund this fiscal year. Amending the fund budget and moving in from general fund to.
That was all. That's my prosecutor's fault.
The, the law library?
Well, he's got different, yeah.
Got vendor switch.
Yeah, vendor switch. And then M you amended to move. The rest of the list of the funds. And we're still in the buy.
Oh.
Sorry. Any questions? Consensus?
Well, you gotta wait, you're with the public. What's coming? We're almost there. Resolutions, I've seen a couple of them there.
We have consensus though?
Yes.
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 Oh, I gotta get out of this one.
Got all our numbers going?
Yeah, I did. I'm prepared.
Yeah.
Open back up. Yeah, we got two resolutions, and I want to do the resolution committee.
We consider them communications correspondence, and that's all they.
Yeah. And then we decided if we wanna bring it to the resolution committee. You got the first one. It's, uh, supporting S P twenty two eight. Two twenty eight. Water portability. Um, the ban on plastic bags, one thing, but I do like the idea of, uh. Taking back control back in order, into the local control. Comments on that? Well, you're looking at them one at a time.
I agree.
The one with the water, it doesn't pertain to us.
No, that's also, I didn't think either.
They adding two dollars to the people in, what is it, Washington County, the water bill doesn't have anything to us, no, plastic bags.
I believe it does. I just, and it's not the plastic bags, I, I mean, yes, plastic's plastic, but it's the point of, I like the idea of. Putting things back into the county control, every little. Ordinance that we can get here, or law. That we can change back to where the county has control over the state is, I believe, good.
Okay, so just asking, cause we were on resolutions, but this is.
Communications.
So we don't have resolutions?
No, we had no resolutions come through the committee.
And then we.
Well, the one on the, on the place, plastic bags. Would have been the resolution.
Like, but.
Oh, I still. We treated them as communications.
Yeah, we treated that as communication.
Cause that's all they.
We're just resetting it and then you guys will look at it in resolutions.
No, we.
We, we should do it on correspondence.
Yes, I said, they sent them to us as correspondence.
Yeah. Okay, so you wanna resolution zero at this point?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And then go to communication or committee reports, and then we'll bring this up as correspondents to go to resolution committee. If someone chooses.
Yeah.
Okay. Correspond, or committee reports, Rick, any committees?
Yeah, I was at pathways and, um. You're looking for housing for in the elder and lose for. People falling through the cracks. And, uh. They wanted. Know they advertise in newspapers between here and northern, uh, the northern lower. I knew a guy who had two newspapers. Then, uh, they needed to talk to realtors too, they're trying to, and I didn't know a realtor.
Just so happened to know those.
I know a lot of realtors, so.
You're the right guy on the committee.
Is that you're talking low income housing?
Yeah.
Which brings to.
They.
In their same realm.
Yeah, we, we all have that problem. Ever get anybody there in gold plans? But I, um. I sent your man to, uh. Township supervisor and. Same building administrator, you know that? That Pam's, but yeah, all it's, it's yours, it was. He was trying to take credit.
We should.
No, okay. So anyway, yeah, I presented that to, um, Calvin and, uh, Sherry all of them. But you're, you're already in contact with it, right?
I haven't called Sherry back yet.
Oh. Anyway, I said that to her, so. With funds?
Uh, many.
No.
I think most of our facilities committees, we've already discussed it in other agenda items for all the things that came up there. Uh, under the recreation one, I did talk briefly with, uh, with the engineer, Boblin Beck. Before their, uh, last road commission meeting there. He says he's still kinda hopeful that they can work something out with the D N R, told me, you know, maybe you need something from us to prove a little small. He said he will, he needs. Input information, help, whatever he, or try and work through with.
As much as I think it's a plus for the county, I think we gotta stand by it too, that we did give them.
And that's, and I, I explained to him like that, with my, I said, you know, without voting on it, my personal opinion was, you know, you've given them ten years.
Yep. That's when they.
Nine, nine, nine years after they. Had a big brouhaha about this.
Yeah.
Cause they were gonna, they told them, you know, you're gonna be done, and then all the people came and they said, all right, we're gonna give you. In nine years, we're redoing the road, you need to have a solution in place.
And it was only a year when they said they were going to do it.
Yeah.
The D N R side answered.
So I voiced that as my personal opinion and also told him that I feel that's the general consensus of the board, so we didn't, we hadn't voted or taken a unanimous position, but. If you needed support, please let us know and we would bring it up for further discussion.
Like.
I don't have.
Dylan?
Um. I think the only thing is, I had land bank, we had a meeting beginning of the month. Um, we're moving forward. I think right now we're submitting most of our blank stuff.
We did add one more property to our list, which was the one in Wusin Township. In Cedar Street, so I.
Thank you.
We just have a.
Emails next up?
Yeah, I got like. He's only sent two.
You?
Yeah, I've only got two.
From Mark and Ronnie, so that is all set, so it's gonna be combined into this, and then we're still working on the yoga.
Oh.
If we can clear the title. I'm gonna submit that also, I haven't all ready to go, so that's where we're at there. Kelly, Kelly, I just. I said, sorry Kelly, I toothed right in. No, that's okay, I knew there was something, it was just on the tip of my tongue, I was like, which one did I do? So that's all I got.
We just came out of an orientation for health department, uh, three of us were there. Who. I guess opened a little bit of eyes, still didn't answer the big questions, but.
Oh, I just wanna ask who bought that courier? Is it the courier of these or every day?
Yeah.
Oh, righty.
That, yes, and, uh, there's still, I still got a list of questions, but I didn't think this, that was the.
Yeah, I didn't either, so.
I thought about where the place was.
No, that's, um.
That was an orientation, I learned a lot, um, there was a few things I didn't know, like the fear counseling and stuff like that. Nicholson does, I didn't really know that that was something we have here in town, um, I also did not know about the healthy U P Health families. That program that doesn't go by expense or insurance or anything, I didn't know that was something that we had in our area, that I think that I probably know a dozen people who could. Very much benefit from that. Um, there was a few other things, so I got a lot out of it. I think that our community needs to know more of, not just the fact that it's the health department, but all the programs they really do have up there. And I was, uh, pretty excited about our baby closet looking the best. I shot up there right before I left and I was like, look at all the new stuff they got in there, they got a bunch of really nice stuff in there since I've been in the last, so.
Um, I also went to a fire department, um, how it's called supervisor meeting or fire chief meeting. Uh, looked at Navis, it is a mutual aid that is more, more than just countywide, right now we have mutually with. Our train towns has got it with the city, with, um, tri-county, township, this is not only statewide, but multi-state. And cuts out a lot of, um. Red tape, where if we had a bad incident, where like the mill or something like that, we exhaust our resources, we don't have to go through a declaration. The governor to try to get more stuff, it's just.
What you did with Omri.
Yeah, it's just a phone call. Through our nine one one system and, or not our nine one one system, but our control room will have. What to do at this point, pull that card, here's who has what, ladder trucks, depends on what our, we, our needs are.
Oh, wow.
And it comes, um, no charge unless it's over, I think they said like a six hour call, you know, most things are gonna be over six hour call. It's something like payment, it doesn't matter, we're gonna pay anyway, so let's bring it on, we'll figure out later who paying, but, um, I think that's a very good thing, um. I think we gotta get with you, did Mavis get with you on, they're having training coming up? And Sheriff said, you know, you had a good idea, there's just a, sending a couple of our people to be actually trainers, because all of our. People in control room are gonna have to learn the system. Cause they're the ones first on the call, and they gotta know who's going what, but, um. Sheriff said send a couple of people, uh, to get trained, in which we have trainers anyway, so have them trained and they can train everybody from here on out that comes in.
They're the trainers.
Yep. And I gotta see what, what else we have. R twenty one, have their benefit?
I was gonna ask about that next, he didn't say.
Yeah, um, did very good, the no ice fishing tournament. But, uh, it looks like right now we did very well, I don't see any numbers, we don't have it exact yet, but I do believe we're well over what it was last year.
That's what I heard.
We had a lot of, our community very much comes from, uh. Now I have, now we're two correspondents. We have two resolutions.
No, we have two correspondents.
Correspondents, two resolutions.
No, there's, there are correspondents from Rashan County, yeah.
Oh, there's two from Rashan?
Yeah, what, our affordability, which you went over. Support of S P two twenty eight. Return local control regarding, oh, this one specifically, the plastic bag, yeah.
Now, and then do we do consensus, or do we make a vote to set up to?
Uh, so if some, if I'm gonna take it up, then make your corrections and bring it to. So we don't have to do anything on it?
Nope, you just say. Even if one of us, yeah, so if one of us likes it, change it to the.
Or if it's in the packet and a member is public.
That's when you're trying to change it.
Brings it to. Or.
Yeah.
But it's, so I like it, I gotta change it to.
Elder County.
Elder County, all that stuff, and then.
Well, no, the resolutions committee.
The resolution committee would do that.
Well, technically, yes, right now we still are, that's one of the recommended changes in the policy, is to get so Joel's crewism sitting doing.
When it comes.
Busy work.
Right, it's, it's, well, it should be in the form that the resolutions committee is going to recommend or not. And then it can go to.
Yeah.
Be affirmed by their trustee.
Probably got a doctor's. See, they're automated number column.
And then the last thing was the letter from, um, retired. Lieutenant Peters regarding her twenty twenty three ARPA stipend. Um, I checked into that, I caught some vote, I talked to the. Um, it'd be the union. Also for the union, and they all said, no, 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 and this is a union thing, it's not a board thing, this is the. If they have a problem, this, they should be going to the union on this, so, I mean, we can accept it, we read it, but. My thoughts on it are, it's a union.
Yeah, this is the.
Not our water.
At this time?
No.
Yeah.
Right.
Unless they can't get it figured out.
Right, it's, it's gotta go to unions. That's it.
Yep, absolutely, yeah.
Um, or comments, that's the end of it for correspondence, that's it. Or. Dylan, you want to turn this thing?
I don't have any.
Yeah?
I was questioning that lady who was here, uh, though she's a state, was she talking about hybrid?
I don't know, she rattled off so many things that was.
You're gonna start writing down all of them.
Hybrids that are not electric.
They're electric hybrids.
Are they?
Combo.
But I thought they had one that was a hydro.
They do, I've been watching a lot on hydros.
I didn't know if that was she was talking about.
I wish she would have left the papers that had the links so that we could at least.
Write it down and then she.
But I'm sure we could get a hold of.
I tried to keep up with her.
I'm sure I got, I know I've got an email on my.
Yeah.
Because me that.
And the only other thing I have is, we are as a county. Finding out would it be like to have low cost, if you were a private individual that had low cost housing and you're renting it. Look what we're dealing with, the animal shelter, you see what I mean? If you were a private.
Yeah.
Owner, and you tried to rouse somebody out, it takes you a year and a half. That's one of the problems.
Yeah.
It's the court system.
Yeah, the banking gonna say, well, I'm sorry, yeah, you're in.
Yeah.
Legal with this, so you don't have to pay for the.
Yeah, and back in COVID, they, those people didn't have to pay their rent, the, the landlord had to suck all that stuff up, and that's not right.
Yeah.
And that's why you got problems. In my opinion. That's all my.
I agree, I, I've seen it Graham Ray, um. Guy had his house and he had lizards and everything in there, had a mouse nest to feed the lizards. And totally destroyed this guy's house, which was at one time his parents', and he had a hell of a time getting them out of there.
Yeah, we're seeing here, the county, what happens?
Yeah.
The courts get a hold of it? We had no control, no?
Only, we don't have no local control of our own stuff.
Is Pam gonna stop taxiing me if I can't use my rent? No. You know. But that's the problem.
Yeah. Yep, seen it a lot of times.
That's my comment.
I guess I have a little more comments.
I think I'm in good shape this time.
Hey, Tom?
No, I'm not one.
Staff comments?
One more, one way.
Almost, almost, almost two.
Uh, elections went good, uh, early voting went, went very well, all the. Local clerks did a great job, considering we had quite a few new people and being my first real bout, so I'm very happy and proud. Think everything, everything got really good.
You had a good night's sleep then?
I went home and I just was on that. Yeah, no, thanks for all the support.
His office is even pretty clean.
Yeah.
Well, we brought in all of the township and city books, textbooks, tax rolls, so now they're, we get to try to collect them. Um, I'm not sure how much our payoff is gonna need this year, but I'll be working on that shortly. And what else, we just get ready to do, get all the grants and our land bank ones due at the end of the month. The lock one is due April ten, so I'll get that ready and I think we might have to sign that one. Um, I think that's, we're working on my office.
Sheriff? Um, I was really happy to see the ambulance village pass as sound as it did, we uh. Um, decided to run it February this year, when I, Joel and Pam and I strategized that, and I'm really happy we did it, passed with an eighty percent uh. Um, passage rate, we're very happy about that, um, next year our nine one one will come up again for another four to five years, so we're. Quite hopeful that it'll pass in the same way, I, um, after our fundraiser, what um, Dean was talking about a while ago. I could not believe the support, um, for our rescue services in the county, I couldn't believe it, that fundraiser was beyond my expectations, would you agree with that?
Yeah, and that wasn't even.
The fundraiser, it was supposed to be.
Well, no, I'm saying that is local, that is local, the pushing part brings, usually brings people in out of town. We had some out of town people come just because, you know, for the fifty tournament, they'd already kind of come. They planned or whatever, but it was mostly locals, it was our own people.
And, and that's, when, when your locals show you support like that, that really speaks volumes, and I, I was so happy to see that, and we had a great time. Um, I can tell you, I've been in the county thirty three years now, and this will most likely be the last time I'm running this time around. Um, we have some of the biggest police cases going on in our agency right now that I've seen since I've been employed with Elger County. Unfortunately, I can't talk about them right now, um, some of them are still highly sensitive, but they're huge cases, huge. Um. And our guys, our girls, our staff are just doing an amazing job, um, we're doing work that. I, I can't believe it, quite honestly, our, our staff is just nailing it, um, and then I, I hear you, I'm clear on the re- revenue lose county, I, I did wanna entertain discussions with the sheriff there. I was gonna come to the board, but it sounds like we're, we're all on the same page here, so I'll, I'll start that rattling that cage a little bit, see if we can't bring in some more revenue to the jail. And um, just thank you guys, and thank Joel and Pam for their continued help of our office, um, we're a big operation, although these two sitting to the right of me, I, I. We'd be lost, quite honestly, they're both amazing people, I thank them greatly, um, other than that, things are going great with us, we got a lot going on, uh. Follow your, oh, next week, next Monday's meeting, we're gonna have a life savings presentation here. Um, this is the second set of life savings awards that our agency has given out in the last four weeks, it's amazing. Um, I have one responder, Cody Gravak, will be coming in next Monday, had that himself, in the last two years, I presented him with three life savings awards.
Wow.
That young man is making a difference. Our ambulance service is making a difference, and we're gonna have a family here next Monday's meeting to celebrate life, they love being here, celebrate with you guys, and I'm gonna get, handle life saving awards and. Um, I'm excited for that, we had a big one at the high school, a couple of weeks ago, that was well attended and. Keep an eye on our TV six news, uh, for some of our cases to break and crack, because um, they will start to crack a little bit and break, but. When I can talk to you more about them, I certainly will, I might just. That's all I can say at this time, but, I like, thank you all for your time and uh. Here we are, we're going into the month of April, and we have no snow, I love it. Absolutely love it, oh, and that's another thing. Snowmobile industry, um, I'm all about it, we support our locals, support, 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 I will say one thing. Years prior, we've averaged forty plus accidents a year. Many fatalities, two to eight fatalities a year normally. Terrible, our twenty one's been on a lot of them, this year, we've had one minor vendor vendor on a snowmobile.
I just need some.
So. I feel for the locals, because we really want to support the locals and everyone, but. Or accidents have gone later. I'd like to say that's from the great policing, but you guys a couple also.
We'll consider it great policing.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brief public comment, I think we got somebody right here.
We have somebody.
We have a question.
No more questions, no, it wasn't answered.
I was going to ask how much time they have left.
She was gonna ask a question, I was gonna ask.
Yes, I do have a quick, brief public comment, Hace Rocker of Township, you guys all know me, um. Something that just maybe, just bringing your guys to attention, because it did, because it's something that's hitting us in the face now, and it's the clerks in the um, townships. So, the state, um, you know, gave this, uh, the option to everyone last year about the new election, um. I'm sure, I'm sure you can speak, Phil can speak better to this, but there's a, a really lot of extra work. Being put on the township clerks, and they're doing full-time work numerous times of the year now for these elections, so. At our level, we look at it and we're like, our clerk makes six hundred bucks, but she works for four weeks a month, you know, that's not, so. We, we're obviously gonna, you know, bring up her pay, hopefully be able to help that, but you, you're gonna see that cascading through a lot of the townships, and you're gonna see a lot of good clerks. Leave, because it's not worth all the work to, for the small amount of pay that they get and all their responsibility, and all, all the stuff that they have to deal with, and, and so.
It, it, thank you, and FYI, the United Township clerk quit.
So, it, it's accounting clerk, Joe. It is, it is an issue, and it's probably something that every township's gonna have to deal with, and they're all just gonna have to pay their clerks more to be able to be there, um, but M T A's trying to push some stuff through so that. That's, that's a, that's an idea anyway, but that's, just so you know, your clerks are really getting a butt kicked, so uh, give them some support if you can.
That's just another unfunded mandate that we see over and over again.
Well, I mean, just to speak, I know that Grand Island Township has what, twenty three people, and they have to stay open and.
And someone has.
They could all be in there one day and get it done, and then they just have to stay open for nobody, because everybody voted in their twenty.
I'm assuming that all the state structuring for this early voting and all the rest of, I'm assuming they did not. Set anything aside to help reimburse some of these township clerks and stuff, for the extra work for the, all this early voting and election and stuff.
For the workers, yeah, for the.
But not for the clerks.
Not for clerks.
Yeah, I, I assumed that was the answer, but I wanted to.
Just so, I thought you guys should be aware of, so they know why, why their, why the clerks are complaining and why boards need to give clerks more money. Thank you.
How much did you pay him to sit there?
We could ban him.
Maria didn't quit, so.
Well, she's on the verge, brother.
And then number five, I think is you, would you want this last one? I think that's adjourned.
Yeah.
Say adjourned.
Say adjourned.
You got it.
You got it.
There's a new comment, Phil.
You're hired.